Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting this November 6, 2018. We have six of seven Planning Commissioners in attendance, and we excuse Commissioner Judy Hansen this evening. We're grateful for all of you coming out to participate in the public process and hope you enjoy the meeting tonight. The first item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar with the approval of minutes from October 16, 2018. If anyone would like to take action on that item. Commissioner Hatch?
I vote to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Commissioner England?
I second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hatch and a second by Commissioner England. Is there any discussion in the motion? Seeing none, let's please vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain, just because I wasn't here and I know I can't vote to approve the minutes, but I'll just abstain now.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Motion carries five to zero with Commissioner Green abstaining since he was absent at the last meeting. Which brings us to item 2A on our business calendar, the 2019 Planning Commission Calendar. Any comments on the proposed calendar of meetings for 2019? The note where the items are, because the first meeting in January would fall on the holiday, we wouldn't have a meeting then, so only one meeting in January, which because of not having a meeting toward the latter part of December this year means there'd be a month gap, if that doesn't backlog any business, but historically that's been fine through the holidays. And then in November, both meetings would be on a Wednesday as opposed to a Tuesday to accommodate political events. Commissioner Hatch?
I am going to actually take my comment back and let Commissioner Luthy comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Sorry, and I apologize, I wasn't at the pre-meeting. I just wanted it noted that Wednesdays are really hard for me, so we'll just have to see how it goes by the time we get there.
Noted, thank you. And of course, this is subject to change, just so long as we give enough notice to notice this publicly. Commissioner Hatch?
I vote that we approve the calendar for next year.
Meaning as stated in the staff packet?
As stated, yes, I'm sorry, as stated. In light of Commissioner Luthy's issues, I think we go ahead and keep it as stated.
Thank you, Commissioner Hatch. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Hatch and a second by Commissioner Green. Is there any discussion to that motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero, which brings us to the last item on our business calendar.
Can I make a comment there?
Yes, Commissioner Green.
For the record, we'd like to encourage the City Council to adopt which of the fifth weeks, months we're going to meet on and get those on the calendar as soon as we can.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that, Julie. If you wouldn't mind putting that in the minutes, that we'd love to interface with Mayor and City Council on the fifth Tuesdays at their discretion and convenience. Thank you. Item 2B, Bedrock Courts Expansion, 5996 West at Danan Way. Amended site plan with street-facing loading doors in an M1 zone. CIR Engineering Scott Forson is the applicant, and Kent Page has this item.
Chair, doors that are facing streets are required to be adequately screened from public view with landscaping. So what we have before you is some visuals showing the proposed addition to the existing building without any landscaping and then with the proposed landscaping. So our code requires that the Planning Commission make findings that landscaping is adequately screened from the, that the doors adequately screened from the public view with landscaping. This proposal went before the Design Review Committee, or we received a majority of comments from the Planning Commission that they felt that this was adequately screened. So here's the site on Danan Way, just across the street from Dan and Yogurt. This is the proposed addition with the existing building, and this is where the overhead door will be located. And down here at the bottom is Danan Way. So this is a Google Earth picture of the existing building, and the expansion of the building will be to the east and to the north. Here's a rendering of the front view, east view, and then again the front view and the east view with proposed landscaping with the overhead door at this location where the red arrow is at. This is the west view, showing without landscaping and then showing with landscaping with trees. So that's the question, if this is, seems to adequately screen from public view the overhead doors.
Great, thank you, Mr. Page. Any questions for staff? All right, discussion among Planning Commissioners, any thoughts?
So I'm just gonna-
Commissioner Green?
I'm gonna ask, so the Design Review Committee has seen this, has had no issues, correct?
That is correct. We have not heard any issues from any member of the Design Review Committee.
And Commissioner England, having sat on that committee, do you have anything else that you would like to express?
Just that it's noted, we didn't have an actual physical meeting, we did it over email. I'm assuming I read every comment, that everybody hit reply all, and they were all positive, so.
Thank you. Would anyone like to propose any action on this item tonight? Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and propose that we approve business item 2B as it is contained in the packet.
Thank you. Commissioner England?
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner England. Do we have any discussion in the motion? Commissioner Green?
Clarification, this one actually has three conditions of approval. Do we want to adopt that as part of the motion?
Mr. Murray, should we articulate those or would it be sufficient just to state what's in the staff packet?
It would be sufficient just to state what's in the staff packet.
Thank you. So we have the motion and the second, is there any other discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's please vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero, which brings us to item number three on the agenda this evening. West Jordan Senior Living, continued from October 16, 1922 S, 9400 South. Preliminary site plan, preliminary subdivision plat, and preliminary development plan in an R320 SHO Zone. HPI Land LLC, Tyler Howland is the applicant, and Ray McCandless has this for the city this evening. Mr. McCandless?
Thank you. Members of the Planning Commission, Mr. Chairman, at the last Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission tabled action on this item, just to allow staff time to look into the zoning history, get a better feel for how the zoning evolved over time. As you recall, there were some questions that were raised, whether or not the property was in the R320 zoning district. We did take a look at, we went back through and looked at the Planning Commission and City Council's staff reports. We also looked at the minutes for the meetings, we looked at some of the old zoning maps, and then there was a zoning interpretation, a zoning interpretation letter that was created that kind of summarized what the findings of that research was. So just to give you a little, bit of an idea, this information is included in your packets, it was also included on the city's website. But just in looking in back, this all kind of started back in 1982 and 83. There was a request to rezone what's now the Wilkover Apartments complex. It went to the Planning Commission meeting and also a City Council meeting, but when it went to the Planning Commission, this property was actually included as part of the rezoning request, but at that time, the Planning Commission opted to take, to remove at least most of this property out of that zoning district. So it was zoned R110. The Planning Commission felt that it was appropriate to move that back. The reason they left that R110 was as a buffer to the adjoining property to the west, which at that time was farmland, and was not in the city. So they felt that that R110, leave that R110 zoning was an appropriate buffer for this There was some other, there was some other action on the property. They were talking about this buffering and moving it to what we call an A1 zone, which is a holding zone. There's no ordinance that talks about, or that actually formally changes that property to an A1 district, it just was kind of left as is. And the, fast forward a little bit, and there was a piece, what had happened is that there was a, we have a 1983 zoning map that shows this property as being part of the R320. So it's been represented that this property's been rezoned or zoned to R320 since at least 1983. Fast forward to 1994, this is when all the zoning maps were being changed over to digital maps. And at that time, in 1994, there was a, the City Council, Planning Commission, City Council looked at the overall zoning map, and they adopted that formally through the adoption of an ordinance. And I'm just gonna get that for the record here. Oh, ordinance number 874. And what that did is that, oh, it's right in front of my nose. There's, the city adopted the official zoning map, and, which states that, and as part of that ordinance, 874, which also recognizes property as being in the R320 zoning district. It says these maps are hereby adopted as set forth in their entirety. All boundaries, notations, and other data shown thereon are hereby adopted as they'll set forth in their entirety. So the entire zoning map was re-adopted, this property was zoned at that time through that ordinance to the R320 zoning district. There were no challenges that were done at that time, there's, and so at that point, since there are no challenges, that ordinance in that zoning map became effective. So in, on August 6 of 2013, the City Council rezoned the property from R320 PD to an R320 SHO zoning district, which is what it currently is. So that's kind of a background on it, and I didn't know if, Doc, you had anything to add to that?
I do. So you had referred to challenges to zoning, and I did add some information in your packet that identifies those sections of the law that deal with challenges to rezoning. It's the law currently, and it's been the law for quite some time, currently codified at 10-98-801 in the Utah State Code, that decisions and changes of zoning have to be challenged in District Court within 30 days. Since there's no record that any challenges occurred, then the zoning as described is the current zoning. And so obviously, your meeting today is not to discuss the zoning, that's long been in place, hasn't been legally challenged, there is no way for somebody at this juncture to do a legal challenge. So that is no longer an issue that you would want to entertain any comment on or discuss. What is on your agenda is a preliminary site plan and preliminary subdivision plat, which as a commission, you can make the final decision on, one way or the other, as well as you also have on your agenda this evening, a preliminary development plan, for which you can make a recommendation one way or another to the City Council. So, but of course, the difference too is that when it comes to these items you have on the agenda tonight, these are not discretionary items as a zone change or an ordinance change would be. The site plan, subdivision plat, and development plan, you're looking at certain criteria, and under state law, when you're looking at administrative applications, if the application meets the terms of your ordinance, you must approve the application. If the application is currently constituted does not meet the criteria of the ordinance, then you would have to deny the application. So of course, you have very limited discretion, and of course, one way or another, as you act on these items, whether you're making the final decision or in the instance of the development plan, making a recommendation, you'll want to make your motions clear, either that you're approving or recommending approval based upon the staff report, or if you're denying, then you'll want to identify the criteria or the parts within the ordinance that do not comply, and make it clear in your motion why you are either denying or recommending denial. So that's probably what I would add to it.
Thank you, Mr. McCandless and Mr. Murray. Commissioner Green?
So I'm gonna ask a procedural question, just to make sure we get this right. Do we need to have, under Robert's Rules of Order, it's normally there, so that's why I want to ask, do we need a motion to take the item that was tabled and bring it back?
No, it's properly placed on your agenda, you don't get a motion, it's already there.
Great, and so, again, for everyone's benefit to understand, we wanted to make sure as a commission that we tasked staff with due diligence to address the issues that were brought up in the last public meeting, so that there's full transparency, full disclosure, due diligence. There isn't a problem on the zoning, that hasn't been challenged. And then we have kind of a triple play in here, we're talking about a preliminary site plan, preliminary subdivision plat, preliminary development plan, so it might be best just to take those one at a time. We certainly don't want to be condescending to anyone's experience, but I'd rather err on the side of going a little bit slower to ensure that nothing is pushed through, to ensure that everyone feels it's discussed properly. So, Mr. McCandless, do you have anything that you'd like to say specific to the preliminary site plan at this point?
We went over the site plan, the development plan at our last meeting, so unless there's anything that you would like me to clarify or to add to it, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff on the two items where we are the final say, meaning preliminary site plan and preliminary subdivision plat, commencing with Commissioner Green?
Yes, thank you, because I wasn't here. So there's at least two things that I want to ask, and I think they'll be very simple. Based on what I found on the county assessor's records, this is a 2.93 acre piece of property. So I just want to make a little preface with that. So given the fact that this is an R320 zone, the maximum number, correct me if I'm wrong, but the maximum number of units in this particular, hold on, 20 times, I want to make sure I do the math right.
Don't forget to carry the one.
Yeah. So the maximum number of units for this particular development should only be 58.6, because it's a, if we go to 50, you can't do a .6 unit, maximum number of units in this development should only be 58, correct?
Just from, I don't know if that include, if the assessor's information included parcel A, which is also owned by the applicant. But based on just the site plan information, or the acreage that was included in just the site plan, it's 2.95, and so we rounded it to 60.
But we can't, we actually can't get to 60, that's my point. If it's less than, if it's less than two, if it's less than three acres, we actually can't get to 60.
It would be 59.
Yeah, okay. And the second question that I have is, where is the courtyard or gathering area that's required by 136H9 that requires that the, that there be, no, in fact, the 136H9 requires common open space at outdoor recreational facilities encouraged, common areas have to be interspersed from the development, have to be located within proximity to the entrance of the building, and it has to have a central gathering place or courtyard or plaza, and then it talks about some furniture, and I'm not, and then it talks about the open space has to be designed to create an environment that limits pedestrian, or that limits pedestrian interaction with motor vehicles, et cetera. I don't see that here. Have I missed something?
Well, with that courtyard, it doesn't establish whether it's indoor or outdoor. You know, you could look at, you could certainly look at the foyer as being the indoor courtyard, you could also require it as a condition of approval if you don't agree. In terms of the, in terms of the outdoor amenities, there are some areas that are just on the, on the south side, there are also some areas that are, on the south side of the building. I think this building's got like 40%, or the site has 40% open space and landscaping, so we think that it meets that.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Yeah, I had two questions. There were two things that were brought up at the last meeting that I just want you to speak about. One was whether there was enough parking, so can you speak to per this requirement, if there's enough parking? And then the second one was about the building height, there was a lot of concern over the building height. Again, will you just explain whether or not this meets the ordinance for the building height in this zone?
It does meet the requirement for both. 90 spaces are required, 90 spaces have been, are shown on the plan. Maximum building height is 35 feet, and that's what's shown.
Thank you.
Any other discussion for staff? Or amongst Planning Commissioners? Commissioner Quinney?
Just, Ray, if you could clarify, we, you've mentioned this already, but when we have a requirement or an allowance of 2.9 acres, why do we just round it to three instead of rounding it down and saying, okay, well, we're not gonna give you 60, we'll give you 58? Just clarification for me.
It's, that was, that was a determination that was actually made, it was part of the previous middle. That was what the zoning administrator at that time did, just said, rounded up because it was 2.95 acres, so if, like I say, if it's the Planning Commission's, it's at the Planning Commission's discretion if you'd like to hold that at the 59 units.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, or is there a motion, someone would like to tender? Commissioner Green?
Before I do that, I just, I just want to make sure that you know where I'm coming from, and the zoning says maximum 20 units per acre. It doesn't say we can round up and guess and try to get 20.1 or 20.2, and I understand what the previous zoning administrator did, but I think the ordinance is very clear that if it's a maximum of 20 units per acre, I think we have to stay to that or below.
As a Planning Commission, you have the authority to overrule his decisions, so.
Okay. And that's where I'm coming from, so I just want to make sure that as we look at this, that we're well within, well within side the boundaries, that we're clearly doing everything transparent, and that's why I brought that up, and the same with the common open space and the gathering areas and those kind of things, that, to make sure that we're meeting the intent. I mean, I don't disagree that there's 40% landscape here. What I, what I do see is it's not very user-friendly, and that it's not easily, it's not easy and convenient for all the residents, and it's not, you know, I know there's supposed to be some benches and stuff, but from my perception, I think it kind of falls short on the landscaping piece when it comes to a courtyard, plaza, you know, the, the reason that we have that to have a sense of place and those kind of things where people can gather, so that's where I'm coming from that, as we talk about this further.
Thank you. And just a comment in the staff packet, it shows all three motions together, if we want to parcel those out one by one, if there are any extenuating conditions of approval that we'd like to see, or if we'd like to see it come back to the Planning Commission, that's always an option.
Chairman Pack, can I-
Yes, Mr. Gardner.
-mention something from the code?
Yes, please.
And 13.21 Rules of Clarification in the zoning ordinance, it talks about fractional numbers. When using fractional numbers, the following shall be used for clarification. And item two says, "In case of density or acreage calculation, any numerical computation or measurement shall be rounded to the nearest tenth, a decimal point of five in the hundred position shall be rounded up."
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
13 point-
Would anyone like to propose an action? Commissioner England?
I'm gonna take a stab. We want to split these up? Okay. I move that the Planning Commission approve the preliminary site plan, subject to the conditions listed on page two of this report, and forward. Nope, and that's it.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner England, a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to the motion? Please vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to one with Commissioner Green casting the dissenting vote. Would anyone like to take any action on the preliminary subdivision plat? Commissioner England?
I move that the Planning Commission approve the preliminary subdivision plat, subject to the conditions listed on page two.
Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner England, a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to this motion? Commissioner Green?
I have a question. So if, because this one I'm wavering on. I don't like the site plan, but the preliminary subdivision plan is really just to deal with the plating of this particular 2-point-whatever piece of acreage, correct? Is that what we're talking about? It's just a plat?
Yeah, it's just one lot and there's streets and so forth, but it is pretty basic, that's all.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure that I know where I'm going with this.
And would it make anyone on the commission feel more comfortable to have this brought back to the commission to ensure that the items that are in question are there? Commissioner England?
I would say no, I don't see any reason why. This is not anything unusual.
Thank you. Any other discussion to the motion? Commissioner Luthy?
No, I'll agree. I feel like that that area right here on the west side acts as much of a gathering area than anywhere else, and there is plenty of lawn area towards both of the south that could be, act as a gathering spot with, for what the intent of the ordinance is, I mean, and that's really where we're all at, it's, we are completely held to what the zoning and the ordinances are, and if they meet it, they meet it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's please vote. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero, which brings us to a recommendation to City Council for a preliminary development plan, if anyone would like to take action on that item. And Mr. McCandless, do you have anything that you- And Mr. McCandless, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that particular item?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Would, can I just get Mr. Murray to explain so that the, the public understands what a, this, this one's for, the development plan, and why it goes to the city council? And just a quick overview so that they understand what we're talking about?
What the planning commission has looked at already is the subdivision plat, which in this instance is just one lot. If it was single-family dwellings, then each house would have its own separate lot where it's buildings, then it's just one big lot, and the only thing the subdivision plat did was pretty much dedicate the streets, put in the public utility easements where the water and sewer lines would go and those kind of things. The site plan was pretty much the layout of the building, the number of units in the building. They were discussing whether it would be fifty-nine or sixty, some of those types of things. A preliminary development plan, on the other hand, is more dealing with the overall landscaping and all the specific layout of, of everything else on the property, other than just the streets and the buildings. So it's the, the height, the parking, the landscaping, the lights, the, a lot of the other things. And so on that particular issue that they're discussing now, the preliminary development plan, they're not making a final decision, they're just making a recommendation to the city council. And then the city council will actually hold its own public hearing, where you would make, be able to make comments there, before they look at either approving or denying it. So this, what they're discussing now is more of the specific details of the project, the types of materials, heights, setbacks, parking, landscaping, trees, poles, lights, those kind of things.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Would anyone like to offer a motion? Commissioner England?
I move that the planning commission forward a favorable recommendation for the preliminary development plan to the city council, as discussed.
Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner England, a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's please vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to one with Commissioner Green casting the dissenting vote. Which brings us to the last item on our agenda this evening. Item number four, Moderate Income Housing Plan. Amend the West Jordan General Plan housing element to incorporate the updated moderate income housing plan. City of West Jordan is the applicant, with Larry Gardner presenting. Mr. Gardner?
Excuse me. So the last few months, I've had the opportunity to work with the wonderful General Plan Committee, which Commissioner Luthy was a part of, which has... And so, but it was an opportunity to work with that group on drafting a moderate income housing plan. The moderate income housing plan is, is part of the general plan. The statute passed this year by the Utah State Legislature is going to require all cities to comply with this by July of two thousand nineteen. Now, the, the...
Can I, can I just?
A motion?
Can I make a motion to recess for ten, for five minutes?
Any, any second? Any discussion? Vote? Please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously five-minute adjournment.
I, I think you're right. We'll take five.
And we're back. We reconvene the planning commission meeting, and we respectfully excuse Commissioner Quinney, who had to step out. We still have a quorum present with five commissioners. With our last item, number four, moderate income housing plan. Mr. Gardner, please continue. Thank you.
And like I said, I've had the opportunity over the last few months to work with the General Plan Committee, who's done a commendable job and taken hours out of their, their day like you guys do all the time, to look at the moderate income housing plan. The moderate income housing plan's a requirement of statute. Excuse me. There. I won't talk with my mouth full. Required a Utah state law. Now, the city has been compliant with that for many years. However, the state is now, and you're all aware, of the tip topic that is amongst a lot of legislatures and a lot of people. There's news stories continually on the affordability of housing. Now, the reason that we have a moderate income housing plan was from the last time that we were in a housing crisis, which was about ten, twelve years ago. And so the legislature adopted the requirement for moderate income housing plan. With this latest statute in two thousand eighteen, the requirement started gaining more teeth, that there'd be certain sections in a moderate income housing plan, certain reporting requirements to be added. And there's many municipalities, quite frankly, West Jordan not being one of them, which have not complied with a moderate income housing plan requirement. And the statute now requires by July of two thousand nineteen to have a moderate income housing plan and report on it every two years. The reporting requirement has been in place for a few years now. West Jordan has always been compliant with that. However, what this new, the moderate income housing plan that is before you has a lot more facts and figures from the two thousand sixteen American Community Survey. Now, you might say, why are we using two thousand sixteen data in two thousand eighteen? Because the statute, that is what they say that cities can use, because that is the most accurate data, and it's conducted by the Census Bureau. There will be more newer data that will come out for two thousand seventeen next year. And so there's always a two-year lag time, and we all know that housing costs have far outpaced wages, and so, so bear that in mind, that this is two thousand sixteen data, but that is what the statute allows, requires us to use. For a planning department of our size, and that would not be feasible to go out and gather housing data, housing costs, and that type of thing. We have a couple of relators that were on the General Plan Committee, and, and they graciously gave me a lot of information about sales and, and things like that, but the actual values you see are out of this, from the Census Bureau. And, and so expect next year to see an update to this, this general plan, moderate income portion of the general plan. There will have relevant data that is gathered for two thousand seventeen. Now, that will still be almost two years old, but that's the best we can do. And I can say, and so this moderate income housing plan will meet the requirements of the statute. When this goes to the city council, I will fill out the form and, for the moderate income housing requirement, reporting requirement, which is a lot of questions on how, how are we meeting the needs of moderate income populations? Are we providing any moderate income housing to the city? And as you can see, overall, as I went through the housing costs and incomes, housing size, household size and that type of thing, let me back up and state that a moderate income is someone making eighty percent of the area median income. And area median income, and I've, I've explained this in, in the report, is based upon the Salt Lake County metro area of eighty thousand dollars. So someone making eighty, eighty percent of that would be sixty-four thousand dollars, and then fifty percent would be, of course, forty thousand, and then twenty-five percent, I'm not smart enough to figure that out, but it's lower than forty thousand. And so...
That's household income, right?
Yes, yes, sir. And all this is based upon households. Thank you, Duncan. I put some other information in here about housing cost burden, how, as you can see, even two thousand sixteen from two thousand ten, the burden on most people has become greater. And what I mean by housing cost burden is more than thirty percent of their income is going to housing. And that is a, that is a, what's it, a category created by the, the federal, the Housing and Urban Development Program. And to see, people might be in housing, but if they're paying fifty percent of their income for housing, by the time you add transportation, food, utilities, it becomes fairly tight, and a burden upon the community, I might add also, because there's not a disposable income to purchase items, such as new transportation, and the likelihood is greater that they will be on some type of assistance, government assistance, or charity-type assistance, and so. But that's really not a part of this report, but I put that in there for, for you to look at, if you want to see burdens. And like I said, I want to update this every year for at least the next couple of years, until housing prices level off a little bit, per population figures. And with that being said, I'll cut to the chase. My analysis states that seventy-three percent of the housing in West Jordan at present, and that's both owner-occupied and rental housing, is moderate income housing. So seventy-three percent, seventy-three percent of the housing. Now, what the state requires is, through this plan, is a forecast of how you're going to meet moderate income housing need over the next five years. That is a requirement that's in here now, but they have graciously provided a model that will calculate, based upon our population, housing values, incomes. And as you see on page eleven, based upon our population growth, by two thousand twenty-three, an additional, and this is just not moderate income housing, but two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two new housing units will need to be added. Now, that's both multifamily and single-family. And of those two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two units, the model predicts that a hundred and thirty-four new units will need to be affordable to extremely low income, and that's less than thirty percent of AMI. Two hundred and forty-five units will need to be affordable to low income, and ninety, ninety-five units will need to be affordable to low income, which is fifty to eighty percent. I don't really have a concern that the city will meet that. I think we have, right now, in the city, projects coming online, there's a very good mix of values. There's some higher-end stuff, a lot of the middle-of-the-road stuff, and stuff that's a little more affordable. Now, quite frankly, the ones that will be the most affordable for the lower-income people will be rental units, because there's just not a lot that can be purchased at, at lower incomes any longer with the raising property costs. But as you're aware of, all of you were at the joint meeting last week, the council is also willing to take steps to explore accessory dwelling units, which are oftentimes some of the most affordable housing. Nearly would live in those, and so that's a process that the planning commission will be taking part of in, in two thousand nineteen, in, in a big way. And so I, I feel like that the city can meet all the affordable housing, and that West Jordan does provide a huge amount of moderate income housing, based upon the two thousand sixteen ACS. Excuse me. Now, those figures will probably, the seventy-three percent figure will probably decrease some with newer figures, because even in West Jordan, things have become out of sight, so to speak, in some cases, based upon wages that are, wages are fairly stagnant right now. It's good that we have a full employment, and I think it's not good that inflation is out of control either, because that leads to a myriad of other issues. But, and finally, in the moderate income housing plan, there's a, a section on goals and policies, and Commissioner Green already talked to me in the pre-meeting about goal one, policy three, about more or less the requiring people to be involved in the Good Landlord Program. That certainly can be amended or eliminated if the planning commission, commission would like it. And that's all I've got. If you'd really like your specific questions or, or concerns, and, and there are two members of the General Plan Committee that you can hear from if you'd like that before the public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gardner, for that comprehensive report. Questions, starting with Commissioner England?
I just have a comment. I, I appreciate the comment that Commissioner Green made in the pre-meeting. I didn't know what the Good Landlord Program was until just up here tonight, Googled it, looked up West Jordan's policy, and I like it. It says landlords agree to run background checks and refuse to rent to applicants with certain criminal backgrounds, and I, I think the statement made in the pre-meeting was, remind me, it was a credit check. So I don't see that anywhere in here. I don't have any problem with a background check, and I think it's our, doing our due diligence as, as government to keep our neighborhood safe. So I like keeping that in there, and that's just my two cents.
Commissioner Luthy?
I don't think I ever asked you this question, even though I sat in on all of those many meetings. Seventy-three percent is what we currently have. What was the required percent we needed?
There is no required percent.
So there isn't?
No. And but what this does is, there are many communities, Alpine, do not have moderate...
No, I stand up as...
Yeah, and so a lot of times, the city has been accused of, well, everything you're building is, is high-priced, nobody can afford it, blah, blah, blah. Well, the city has, West Jordan's an old city for one of the South Valley areas, you know, I grew up here. You know, there was three thousand people when I was a kid, but it still had some older subdivisions that were here. And those affordable subdivisions continued through the seventies and eighties and nineties, and, and so, and also apartments, market-rate apartments. And so the city, the reason I put that in there is the city is providing moderate income housing. This is a moderate income housing community. Like it or not, that's what it is. Now, as you can go through the, the income figures, there, there is a sizable, almost a thousand people that make well over two hundred thousand dollars a year, so it's not a poor community. In fact, if you read Pam Perlich's comment, you know, West Jordan, South Jordan, and I can't remember what the other one was, or, or looked at as affluent communities. People can generally, you know, and the nice thing about West Jordan is, if you chose to, you could spend your entire life in this community and not be, not be, costed out of housing. And that was a problem in Sandy for a lot of years, is the kids would grow up there, but there was nothing for them to come back to, because they couldn't afford it in Sandy. And so there is no requirement. What there is now is, in the statute, a requirement that... What there is now is, in the statute, a requirement that how is the city going to meet the moderate-income housing burden that's upon the community? And that's in the model. And like I said, I feel fairly comfortable that in five years, we can report that we're meeting it, because, you know, we do have some, some higher-priced homes that are coming online here, but that's not the vast majority. You guys know that, being on the commission, most of them are affordable to people who generally are moving out from a starter home, you know? And there's a lot of people that choose to stay here in West Jordan. So I don't know if I answered your question.
You did, you did. My concern was just that if we are that high, seventy-three percent, and there's others that have like five percent, are we now at equal bearings going forward? I mean, I feel like that's just going to hurt us. Does that make sense?
No.
It's not really spreading it around, it's just penalizing us.
And I can't, I really don't know if that's the state's intent. And I don't want to get off on a diatribe about my feeling about it, because it will not end in a good place, so. But I just want to read this to you, and so, best, and this is everything, everyone has to comply with this housing model.
Right.
That the state has put up.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know what the more affluent communities are doing, if they'll choose to ignore it, if they'll just say, okay, here's our projection, you know, that's all the statute requires at this point. Now, bear in mind, there's a much stronger, or at least in the, the rumor is that there's a much, much stronger legislation coming in the next legislature as far as housing affordability. But it says, based on estimated population growth, it is projected that West Jordan will need all total an additional, so I put that figure. And so, what the model takes into account is population growth, income, the housing values you already have. And so, these are fairly reasonable. And I think if you go to a much more affluent community, they may be in the thousands. You know, you have to provide this, this many, because there's so much stuff at the high end in those communities and very little at the low end. Now, to be fair to some more affluent communities, they are building a lot more multifamily than they used to. And moderate-income housing can be certainly a multifamily component, and so, that's the best I can answer.
Okay. I just would hate for this to drag us down.
No.
And if it's doing it trying to equalize it, which I think is the point of the whole thing, that makes a little bit more sense, but I feel like we're being penalized a little bit about it.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know, Duncan, if you had anything to add to that, what you feel is in the wind here with affordable housing, or?
Well, what I predict is that those communities that can prove that they're doing something and that their numbers are good, and that can prove that their numbers are good with statistics, are going to fare well no matter what happens. I do feel that the state legislature over the, especially this last session, is coming up with more unfunded mandates. I think they're usurping or taking away, because I guess they have the right to take it, they take away a lot more local authority. But I think we're better off regardless if we have more data and we can prove that we're actively doing things to create the, more moderate-income housing. And I think it's a plus if we already have a huge supply. But we can't count on just the supply, we have to show that we're consistently creating more. So I think the, Larry and the rest of the planning staff are doing a great job of developing that data to prove that we're not one of the municipalities that's not, quote, not doing something. I think we're, we're going to be in a, a good position. I think we're actively, I think a lot of our ordinances, especially the PC zone and so forth, and I think the actively updating our general plan, this moderate-income housing element, these are all good pieces. There's other things the planning staff's working on. We're actively looking at accessory dwelling units and some of these other things as well. So I think the cities that are going to have problems are the ones that aren't looking at any of these things, and whose numbers aren't good, and they're not creating any new moderate-income housing. I actually feel good, which is counterintuitive, because I don't like the fact that the legislature is, is playing this role of, you know, being overly aggressive on cities. But I, but I do get it, because there are cities out there that aren't doing it. And if the state legislature is not the check and balance to bring them in line, who is? I just don't think that there were going to be one of the ones being brought back into line, because I think we're already doing more than our fair share, so.
And that's kind of what my point was. I feel like we're already doing more than our fair share. So to burden us and to go against what the goals are with the cap and grade and stuff seems excessive.
Right, and cap and grade is a great component, too, that we already have in place, but, so, yeah, I, so if you were to phrase the question, Art, do we think we're going to get burdened a little bit and perhaps unfairly? Yeah. But is it going to be overly burdensome? No, because of everything that we're doing. That's, that's at least what I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question, you have mentioned that there's some reporting that is required for municipalities. Are there, is there any teeth if municipalities don't follow this moderate-income housing? I mean, is there a repercussion? Is there a cost? Is there a penalty?
At present, over the last eight, ten years, they've had that? No, there hasn't been anything. But with the new legislation passed last year, I think that there is, well, I don't know what the teeth is. And so, but it will be the state that will be creating that, whether it will be withholding of some type of funding. Quite frankly, the legislation for affordable housing that they're passing, the proposal is to withhold transportation dollars that are collected through gas tax if you're not even willing to try to meet this. And so, I know that's something that California did many years ago, and so, at current, the teeth, you know, they're pretty dull, pretty, you know, false teeth, but I don't, I don't see that continuing. I really think that this has become enough of a burden upon the lawmakers that they actually want to see the cities comply with what they've done.
And I would think with the Salt Lake Chamber and their business community and how they're pushing this, that Ivory Holmes is a big, you know, proponent for this.
And, you know, we've met with Ivory the last few months on maybe some proposed developments, and they are a proponent of what they call workforce housing, housing that is affordable to people that are not necessarily have professional degrees or even college degrees, but people that, you know, do a lot of the heavy lifting and go to work every day.
Right.
But, you know, and the sad thing is, is people get up and go to work every day, and schoolteachers are in this, you know? And they can't, really even, when policemen, you know? They really can't even afford a place to live a lot of times. And so, and Ivory is a proponent of that. They, they see that, and they're a big enough company that they, they can spread it around, they can do some high-end stuff, and, but I think it's a wise business decision on their part to say, hey, this is an issue that we need to address, because, and for economic development, you know, what I've always said is that, you know, a street sweeper's paying the same for a loaf of bread as a doctor, you know? And so, he might not buy as many as the doctor, but they're still participating in the economy, and so.
Does West Jordan have a lobbyist that helps with legislative session?
Do you have a lobbyist, Duncan? I don't.
We have two sets of lobbyists, one for just transportation issues and one for general issues, and we meet with them a couple of times a year. The council's been actively meeting with our lobbyists over the last, well, two months or so, getting ready for this next session. And we actively focus on certain specific bills and issues. In fact, one of the ones over the last couple of years was that bill that allowed us to have an auto dealership, in which even though we don't have one, it's legally possible, and we've identified and owned land for one. But, so a lot of the, the benefits of those lobbyists aren't immediately apparent, but we really do get bang for our buck.
That's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Green.
So I'm going to go back. By the way, I love the report and the detail, Mr. Gardner. Just a couple of things, and I will go back to this. First, on the, the one, the one policy, goal one, policy three, require all rental properties to participate in the Good Landlord Program. Just, just for the record, four-two-R-two, West Jordan City ordinance four-two-R-two that codifies the Good Landlord Program, requires an application, driver's license for everybody over age eighteen, a credit check, employment, income and employment verification, rental references for the last three years. If we're trying to get new couples, we're trying to get some people, they may not have a credit history, and they may not have a rental reference history for three years. So going back to that, requiring the Good Landlord Program may not be in our best interest and maybe encouraging, softening that, like we talked about, softening that to say encourage or, and as we look at the Good Landlord Program, are there ways to adopt that principle and still do what we want to do with the Good Landlord Program, yet make it so that the people that we want to move into the moderate-income housing can actually do that and not be excluded by the program that we're trying to, that we're trying to require them to do. The other, the other one that, I'm just going to have you take a look at this, just, 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 in policy two, or sorry, goal two, policy four, it's right on the top of page thirteen, it talks about considering, consider requiring a percentage of units and new multifamily developments be moderate-income range. I'm, I'm afraid on that one, we might be limiting ourselves, because the cap and grade limits ourselves so much. I'm wondering if we shouldn't massage that wording a little bit, so that we can, you know, we consider having a percentage of other developments also include moderate-income housing on that one. And then last, under goal three, it, it occurred to me as I'm sitting here and I'm reading about the casitas and some of these other things, and we're talking about accessory dwelling units and all those other kinds of things that we talked about last week, I'm wondering if one of the incentives for, in, in goal three, wouldn't be some sort of reduced, like for accessory dwelling units? I'm wondering if, if we, on those, or even any income housing, reduce building permit fees and, and, and something, particularly for, if we're talking about ADUs and some of those kind of things. Some ADUs, you know, probably the cost isn't that expensive for building permits, but I'm wondering symbolically and, and some of those other kind of things, that if we talk about reducing building permit costs and some of those kind of things, if that wouldn't just be part of a, you know, saying, look, we are trying to be friendly for those kind of things. So those, those were my comments on those goals.
And so, can I answer quickly? The General Plan Committee, we talked a lot about fees, and they, they felt the better program, rather than reducing fees, is have a rebate program. So if, if they participate then, and they do what they say they're going to do, then they can get a rebate, say a building permit, I don't know, I'm just throwing a thousand dollars out here, and they'd have to pay the thousand dollars, but if they did what they said, that they could be up to, maybe the city would rebate them five hundred or two fifty or whatever, I don't, come up with some kind of figure, that'd be up to the council to decide, but.
Well, maybe we just, just put even, okay, did I read, did I read rebate?
It's in here at all?
Mentioned something on the other pages about rebates, and Nicole could probably answer, because she was really involved in that. Yeah. Well, it really was. I think Nicole and Cheryl, the people that are in Max, the people that were here, really liked the rebate.
I'm, I'm just scrolling, scrolling through the policies, and I don't, I'm not sure I see the word rebate, so maybe I'm just wondering, you know, we talk about incentives, maybe if we can just, you know, just talk about, examine the possibility of rebates or something, just in there as part of the policy goal.
Commissioner Luthy.
One thing I will disagree with what Commissioner Green said, I, we discussed quite lengthly about putting the, the one that says consider a percentage of the multifamily to be this. We talked about that at length, whether to do it in all subdivisions or just multifamily, and we feel with the, the planned communities out there, there'll be plenty of opportunities, even with the cap and grade, to be able to pull something like that, without making it that every neighborhood feels like it's going to have to make the pull.
Thank you. And this was noticed as a public hearing, so let's open that at this time, and we'd love to hear from our awesome General Plan Committee members. That's how I got my start in public service, was being asked to serve on the general plan. So thank you very much for participating. Similar to how we know that city council listens to our recommendations, we certainly want to listen to recommendations from other committees, so that we're all working and playing well together and getting the benefit from many different perspectives. Would any of you like to step forward at this time and offer any thoughts regarding the general plan or anything that's been discussed this evening? Please feel welcome, please feel encouraged.
Where'd Max go?
No pressure, but come on down. Well, thank you so much for all your work, and please, please come forward. Well, you're moving closer, we'll just wait till you keep coming up, one more row, one more.
Anyways, I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the committee, I thought it was very good, and I think that hands off to the staff for all the different areas that they brought to our attention. I think it's a good plan, lots of give and take was given on all things, and a lot of consideration was done, and I think it turned out quite well, and I think it's good.
Could you please state your name for the public record?
Cheryl Acker. I was nominated to be the chair, so that was intimidating too, but it was good.
Outstanding. Thank you, Ms. Acker.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Anyone at all? We'll close the public hearings section and bring it back to the commission. Any thoughts, commissioners? I enjoy the Good Landlord Program, I went through that, and I remember that many statistics were shown that when you do vet applicants with a certain base level of background checking, it saves the city much money in terms of response for police, fire, tends to bring up property values, people take care of the place better, whether it's in their rental contract or not. I remember all of this being brought up and, and being reasons why, especially with the downturn economy, because I recall that it was a decade ago that I participated in, and I think it was two thousand eight. And that, that was one of the main reasons that the city instituted that, to save some funds and to, to ensure that West Jordan was a safe, good-looking, aesthetically pleasing place.
Let me add something, that, Good Landlord Programs have been in the gun sights of the state for a long time. I wouldn't be surprised if, if in the near future, it's probably not made legal by the state, because what they're feeling is, is that cities adopt these, and it's like a balloon, you push on the balloon, and one part of it comes out, you know, that, like the county doesn't pass them, because they're larger, and so everybody goes to the county, everybody goes to this city, and then it comes to this point where there's some places where people can't live anywhere in the county, and so, at least that's what I was hearing a few years back, but, I don't know, Duncan, I haven't heard anything as late about Good Landlord Programs, but it has been in the, the sights of the state for a few, a little while now.
It, it could happen. I mean, the, the thing I like about how we're currently running the Good Landlord Program is it's, it's completely voluntary. I mean, somebody can choose to not participate or choose to participate, and, and so I, I never get worried if there's an option where it's not mandatory, and those are the kinds of things, too. I mean, having been an apartment manager myself before, I found that I was automatically doing some of those things myself anyway, just to ensure that my life wasn't too hectic, you know, that I was picking a better level of, of tenants that could get along with the tenants I already had. So, so, yeah, I mean, it, it could go. So, so, yeah, I mean, it, it could go away, but I think it's still a good idea to have it while it's available.
And I believe there's still the economic incentive to participate as well, correct? I know we talked a little bit about it, but I remember that for a homeowner who's renting, if they participate in the program, it was like a $20 a year fee versus 200 or something like that.
Right, yeah, yeah. I mean, the main incentive is for the business owner that owns the apartments gets a significant reduction in his annual business license fee, so. And it's possible that with the adoption of a new business license fee schedule, that that reduction for an apartment owner could be even more significant now, so.
Commissioner Green?
And, and, don't get me wrong, there's, there's no doubt that the Good Landlord Program works. I use the Good Landlord Program. I hired a property management company to deal with the piece of property that I have to run, and they're certified good landlord, so I don't have to deal with some of that stuff. What I want to make sure of is that if we require this, then, then, and in some respects, what Mr. Gardner says is what the legislature thinks, and a lot of times, besides the balloon effect, is that if we're requiring credit checks or we're requiring rental references that have to be solid, what we are, what we are being is discriminatory against some poor, the poor people, saying, well, you don't have, you don't have a good credit history, you can't live in West Jordan. And that defeats the purpose of having, you know, if you have, if you have a threshold that you run the credit or you have to have income verification and some of those kind of things, then how do you have the people who are the moderate income housings targeted come to your area if they can't qualify because the regulation inherently bars them from being there? And I think that's the legislature's argument, actually, is that it does, that it does tend to discriminate against the poor, and when you look at, I mean, we don't have a lot of Section 8 housing in West Jordan. We have, I know we have a couple of projects that are, that have been tied to that, but I think we have to, I think we have to be sensitive to that, and that's why I don't want to use the word "require." If we soften that, say encourage or something like that, I'm good there, and I beat a dead horse, but that's, that's, that's the philosophy, because I, I just don't think if we require, if we, we go that far, we're not going to attract the right, if they become rentals, if there are rentals that are part of the moderate income housing, we're not going to be able to use those if we require that. And I'm not sure that we can require anybody to, you know, that was, I think, to Mr. Murray's point, I think as long as it's optional, then that addresses what we needed to do as long as the Good Landlord Program still is allowed by the legislature.
Yeah, and I think to follow up on what you're saying is, I mean, you can only formally recommend changes to the ordinance for Titles 12, 13, 14, and 15. You're talking about Title Four, but we could still informally, as staff, pass along to other staff that that is your thought, that one specific part, dealing with credit checks, we can pass that along.
And it doesn't necessarily set a minimum number. It's coming back from Equifax or TransUnion or Experian. It's just, you're doing the check to see if something comes up.
And it does become an enforcement problem, because, you know, it would mainly focus upon the new, and so I like the word encourage better. I really, I think that that's a much better way to go, and I appreciate that, because require just puts a burden upon the business licensing staff, and, and then it gets into this, well, we're requiring it for the new, but there's a whole myriad of people out there that aren't complying with it, and so.
Sure, and then you have to try to enforce. Final comments? Commissioner Luthy?
I am happy to go with encourage instead of require. One thing I would note, though, is that this is for the moderate income, not necessarily the poor income, so let's be very clear on that. The thought process on this is to be able to find average Joe a house, not necessarily the people that can't afford anything a house, right? I'd like to make a motion if you're amenable.
Please.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the general plan and incorporate an updated moderate income housing plan with a revision using the word encourage instead of required on the Good Neighbor Program.
Thank you. Commissioner England?
I second that.
A motion by Commissioner Luthy, a second by Commissioner England. Do we have any discussion to the motion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously four to zero, which brings us to the, five, I was trying to count, one, two, three, four, five. Can I borrow your calculator again?
Did we ever note that?
I didn't carry the one.
Do we ever note that he left?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I missed it.
Great. A motion to adjourn?
For your information, I probably won't be here the first meeting in December. It looks like I get stuck going on a calendar.
You mean the only meeting?
That'll probably be the only meeting in December, too. Okay. Okay, thank you. Any opposition to adjourn?
No.
We stand adjourned until November 20th. Thank you.
Let's beat that thing, of course.